My name is Kathleen Casey and I serve as Chair of the Financial Accounting Foundation. I would like to welcome our stakeholders tuning in today to this virtual meeting. Today's meeting will include reports from the Financial Accounting Standards Board Chair, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Chair, the Financial Accounting Foundation Executive Director, and the Financial Accounting Foundation Treasurer. We will receive reports about the latest activities of the Financial Accounting Standards Advisory Council and the Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council. And we will also receive a report from the Trustees Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee. Before we get to the reports, I would like to announce some important appointments. The FAFB Board of Trustees have reappointed Christine Botterson to the FASB for a second five-year term, which will begin on July 1st of next year. Since joining the board in 2016, Christine has shown great leadership in working with the academic community to increase the supply of relevant research, improving FASB's use of academic research, and supporting academic educational activities. The trustees have also appointed a FASB member to succeed Hal Schroeder. Fred Cannon will join the FASB on July 1, 2021. Fred currently serves as the Executive Vice President and Director, Research and Chief Equity Strategist for Keith Burriette &amp; Woods, a unit of Stifel Financial. Additionally, this morning, the FAFB Board of Trustees voted to appoint five at-large trustees who will begin their five-year term on January 1, 2021. The new trustees are Timothy Kristen, Chairman of the Board of Baker Tilly International Limited; Lynette Kelly, former President and Chief Executive Officer of the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board; Richard Reising, Chief Executive Officer for Anderson Zermulon &amp; Company PC and Member of the Private Company Council; Sarah Smith, former Chief Compliance Officer and Chief Accounting Officer for Goldman Sachs Group; and Robin Washington, former Executive Vice President and Chief Financial Officer for Gilead Sciences, Inc. They will succeed current trustees Chuck Allen, Chris Cummings, Jean Flood, Ken Robinson, and Diane Rubin. In addition to five new trustees, I'd like to note two current trustees who will be serving in new roles. Mary Barth will serve as Vice Chair, and Eloise Foster will serve in the role of Secretary and Treasurer. I'd like to thank them for agreeing to serve in these leadership roles. I would also like to officially welcome all of the new appointees I just mentioned and say thank you to those who will be completing their service. With that, let's move to our regular agenda. And the first item of business is to approve the minutes from the board's August 18th meeting. May I have a motion?
All moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the meeting minutes are approved. Our next item is a report from the Oversight Committee, and we will hear from Eloise Foster and Chuck Allen. Eloise, or Chuck?
Thank you, Kathy. I'll start. Let me apologize upfront, they're working on the alarm in my house, and so if you hear some screeching, everything's okay, they're just, they're just working, so. So let me start with the FASAC, the meeting we had with the FASAC Chair Mike Morrow. It was our annual meeting with Mike, and since it was his first year as a FASAC Chair, it was his first meeting with the committee. Looking back on his first year, Mike discussed the use of technology, the focus on feedback, especially from the investor perspective, the need to increase diversity among the members and FASAC's role in the PIR process. So I think we all felt it was insightful conversation, it was good to spend the time with Mike as a committee for the first time, and we look forward to continuing to work with him. Next on the agenda is that I wanted to give you some insight into the PCC matters. Sue Kasper provided her perspectives on the September PCC meeting, as did committee members Mary Barth and Diane Rubin, who observed that meeting. Mary, would you like to make a few comments on your observations of that meeting?
Sure, Chuck, thank you. As Chuck said, I observed the PCC meeting on Monday and Tuesday, September 21st and 22nd. And just in brief, I was very impressed by the thoroughness of the discussion overall, especially the interchange with the Tactical Issues Committee, the TIC, which was a joint meeting, and the PCC seemed to listen very carefully to the issues raised by the TIC and to take them onboard for future consideration. I also thought there was quite constructive dialogue with the FASB member liaison, Sue Kasper, who was in attendance. It just seemed that there was a very easy exchange of views on all sides, and a lot of listening was going on. I really enjoyed the conversation.
Okay, thank you, Mary. So Diane, first of all, Diane Rubin, I want to thank you for being the FASB liaison with PCC for the past five years. I will tell you that your commitment and insight that you've provided back to us as trustees has been second to none, so if you could say a few words about the meeting, and if you don't mind about your years of service on the PCC, I think we'd all be interested in hearing that.
Thank you, Chuck, and thank you for your service. This is your last trustee meeting too, and you've been an exemplary co-chair of the Oversight Committee, and really thank you for your leadership on the Oversight Committee. Mary and I both observed the PCC meeting, and I would agree with Mary, there was an excellent exchange of views among the PCC members in FASB, the PCC members and TIC. They had very robust discussions about goodwill, goodwill impairment and triggering events, profits interest discussion that will affect private companies. And as Chair Candy Wright noted, there was a general consensus that the PCC wanted to add a role in trying to help private companies with implementation and education about new standards. They want to be helpful in that regard, and so it was a very, very good meeting. I certainly enjoyed my role on the PCC, and we've been so fortunate to have terrific chairs, Billy Atkinson, who was the original chair, and Candy Wright is serving so notably, and eliciting comments from all the members. We couldn't do it without Sue Kasper and her help all along, she's been there from day one. Thank you to FAF for, and the trustees before us for creating the Private Company Council. I think it's been an effective way to address private company stakeholder concerns.
Thank you, Diane, and again, thank you for your service. It's, like I said before, it's been second to none, so thank you. Also, our meeting yesterday, Rich Jones and Joel Black provided their detailed reports at the Oversight Committee meeting, and as the FASB Chair report is next on the agenda, I wanted to just share a little bit about what Rich shared with us without preempting anything he might say later on. But he spoke to us about the PIR activities, something we've been watching very closely as an Oversight Committee, engaging stakeholders, and agenda prioritization in some internal initiatives that FASB is pursuing related to both its processes and people as they respond to the pandemic. So again, it was good to be with Rich and to hear his comments, and he's going to have more to say later on in this meeting, so. All right, so Eloise, with that, I don't see you on the screen, but I'm going to turn it over to you if you're out there in virtual land somewhere.
I think she's joining us by phone, Chuck.
Okay. Eloise? I can give her a report if I need to, not as good as Eloise could do, but I can do that.
Here I am.
Okay. Good.
Good morning, thank you, Chuck, I do apologize, I am out here being technically challenged today. Good morning, everyone. I also don't want to discuss any of the materials that Joel Black is going to be covering in his upcoming, in his upcoming report. However, I did want to mention the webinars that the FASB team is conducting related to the Financial Reporting Model Improvement Project and the Revenue and Expense Recognition Project. Joel noted that two webinars have already been held. One was with the users, and then another was with the preparers and the auditors. I believe Joel told us that four more webinars are scheduled to be held before the end of the year. Joel is going to be elaborating on these webinars, he's also doing some videos, and so when he reports, he will be updating on those activities that are underway. Now, at each of our committee meetings, we also discuss the various advisory council and other meetings that committee members have attended in the past few months. In addition to Mary and Diane reporting on the September PCC meeting, David Lillett and I provided our observations on the October virtual GASEC meeting. We also heard from Larry Salva, who observed the FASB meeting in August. But in the interest of time today, I won't ask them to repeat their reports, but what I would like to do is to ask the trustees, who are not on the Oversight Committee, who observe meetings, to just say a few words. I know Sue Carter observed a FASB meeting in September. Bruce Herring also observed a meeting of FASB's Investor Advisory Committee last week. So I'm going to start with you, Sue, and followed by Bruce. Would you all please report your observations for the meetings you attended?
Sure, Eloise, thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. On September 2nd, I participated in a webinar of a FASB board meeting. There was one topic for discussion, it was improving the accounting for asset acquisitions and business combinations. The purpose of the meeting was to affirm the scope of the project. The discussion centered around four questions primarily related to existing differences in accounting for acquisitions of assets versus acquisitions of businesses, and to what extent those differences should or could be narrowed. Attention was focused on providing investors with the most useful information while balancing disruption, that is, cost and complexity that may result from any changes. All board members were well-prepared and offered insightful comments. Rich Jones led the meeting well, allowing all board members an opportunity to express their views before offering his own. I really appreciated the opportunity to observe the meeting.
Thank you. Bruce, could we hear your observations, please?
Certainly, thanks, Eloise. So on November 10th, I attended the Investor Advisory Committee meeting, which I was very impressed by, it was the first time I had attended one, and there were several items on the agenda. The first was just to review emerging trends and some project updates, specifically around supply chain financing, disclosure by business entities about government assistance, certainly in the post-COVID assistance world and how to treat that, and some conversation around how to identify intangible assets and goodwill. There was also a really interesting conversation about how investors are increasingly using non-financial statement data to help them make investment decisions, which was, I think, thought-provoking for the committee. And then there was a longer and more robust conversation about intangible assets. And so, you know, I was impressed by a few things in the meeting. One, the technical competency of the members of the committee, the open dialogue, I think most felt comfortable and actively participated, and the sort of constructive nature of the conversation. As I said, Rich was also in the meeting, and I think did a nice job of engaging with the committee members. So thank you for letting me report out, Eloise.
Well, thank you, Bruce and Sue, for sharing those observations with us. That concludes my report.
Thanks so much, Eloise, and thank you also, Chuck, for your report. So we will now move to reports from the Chairs of the FASB, FASAC, FASB, and GASEC, and we will start with Rich Jones. Rich?
Thanks, Kathy, good morning. It's my pleasure to report the activities of the FASB for the third quarter of 2020. I would like to start by thanking the trustees, my fellow board members, our staff, and our stakeholders for helping us fulfill our mission in this challenging environment. I think it's amazing to see what can be accomplished when we all work together, so I would like to thank all of you. The third quarter was an active quarter at the FASB. We resumed our normal schedule of board meetings so that we can respond to emerging issues and set direction of our projects in public forums. We remain cognizant of the environment our stakeholders are operating in, and will continue to keep that in mind when doing outreach, when setting comment periods, and when setting effective dates. We issued two final standards this quarter. The first was on the accounting for convertible debt, and the second was on the presentation and disclosure by not-for-profit entities for contributed non-financial assets. The board also issued several proposed documents for public comment, including a proposed deferral of the effective date and modification of early application guidance for insurance entities. Exposure draft was issued in the third quarter and actually finalized in the fourth quarter. We issued a proposed concept statement related to elements of financial statements. We issued a PCC proposal related to determining the current price of an underlying share for equity classified share option awards. And we issued a proposed practical expedient for private company franchisors on accounting for revenue recognition. The board also added several projects to its technical agenda, including the effective underwriter restrictions on fair value measurements, leases targeted improvements, and ED was subsequently issued in the fourth quarter. We added a project on reference rate reform, defining benchmark interest rates, as well as a project on recognition and measurement of revenue contracts in a business combination. Subsequent to the close of the third quarter, we also added two projects, one related to reference rate reform scope refinements based on emerging issues we were seeing in the marketplace, as well as a project on disclosure of supplier financing programs. The item that Bruce mentioned, he listened to some of our discussion at the Investment Advisory Committee earlier this, or earlier last week. So in addition, the board had substantive deliberations on over half of the projects on our agenda, as well as addressing a large volume of agenda requests that had built up over the past six months. While the mix of major versus targeted projects on our agenda will ebb and flow over time, that mix is influenced by a couple of factors. First, we just went through, or in the process of, a period of significant accounting change, and we were focused on the success of that accounting change, including any improvements or fine-tuning we need to do. Secondly, unlike the early 2000s, which some of you remember, we are a single standard center. So as a result, our activities necessarily need to address, not simply major projects, but smaller issues as they emerge and maintaining the overall codification. I would like to also provide a brief update on our post-implementation review process. So the staff has previously provided the board and the public a plan for the post-implementation review process for those standards currently under review. Those are revenue recognition, leasing, and the credit impairment standard. We regularly update the PIR section of our website to provide transparency to our stakeholders as to what phase we are in and what progress we are making. The PIR plans are subject to changes we learn more while conducting the review. For example, we can expand it and add additional steps to an outreach as deemed necessary. Our PIR activities this quarter have included continuing to address technical inquiries, primarily from private companies as their adoption date approaches. Our staff is actively monitoring implementation efforts by collecting data from earnings calls, 10-Qs and call reports, and through discussions with stakeholders, be they buy-side and sell-side analysts, regulators, preparers, industry groups, and auditors. Our staff continues to assist stakeholders by participating in workshops and working with AICP expert panels, regulatory agencies, and the SEC staff on emerging issues. Board members and staff have presented at numerous conferences and webinars, and we have held and are planning on holding future roundtables to assess the adoption of the standards by both public companies, as well as the status of adoption by private companies. Our staff will provide a status update of activities completed and feedback received on the leasing and CECL post-implementation review process in an upcoming December board meeting. Beyond post-implementation review, our third quarter outreach included numerous meetings with investors, preparers, elected officials, international standard setters, academics, regulators, and practitioners. We also conducted numerous meetings with advisory committees and the PCC. You'll hear a report from the Chair of the FASAC later in this meeting. In short, it was a busy quarter. With that, I would like to extend my thanks to the outgoing trustees. Thank you for all of your advice, all of your guidance, you will be missed. I know we have a great slate coming in, but I thank you for everything you've done. It's greatly appreciated. So with that, Kathy?
Thanks, Rich. Questions for Rich? I see Chuck Allen and then Mary Barth? Chuck?
Yeah, thank you, Kathy. Rich, yesterday at the Oversight Committee meeting, you put up a slide that discussed the longstanding projects that have been affected by the board turnover, and your approach to get board member views and sort of move those projects and the priorities forward. Would you like to say a little bit about that for the benefit of the trustees and those listening in?
Sure, sure, Chuck, no, I appreciate that. I think one thing I was focused on, and I mentioned that we've brought over half the projects on our agenda back to the board just in the third quarter. One of my focuses was, I recognize that many of those projects had been added with a different slate of board members. And as a result, some of our current board members never had an opportunity to vote on either adding that project or the direction of that project. And what I thought was important as we set forth a course of action on, I'll call it achievable standard setting, was to make sure that I understood the perspectives of the board and that the staff was moving in the direction that the board ultimately wanted. And so that's something I've been focused on throughout the quarter and will focus on in the fourth quarter.
Mary?
Rich, at a recent conference, you made a comment that making sure there's, you want to make sure there's a need for a change in accounting standards before tinkering with them. And I wondered whether you could elaborate on that comment, what did you mean? Will there be change in the FASB's due process, or what exactly did you mean by that comment?
Sure, sure, Mary, and that's probably my layman's language for what I call making the case for change. I do think when we add something to our agenda, we need to think about why we're adding that project. And ultimately, if we vote to issue a final standard, why we're doing that? Who is intended to benefit from that change, and what will that benefit be? And I think just as important as us making that case to ourselves, it's how we communicate that to our stakeholders. I think it should be very transparent why we're taking action, when we take action, and what the benefit is expected to be.
Ken?
Thank you, that helps. Great, thanks, Kathy, and good morning, Rich. Yeah, the question I have is, IFRS, you know, issued a consultation paper asking for input on ESG setting issues, and the desire ability to have the IFRS or ISB own that process. Is this something that FASB will comment on, and if so, kind of your top-line thoughts?
Sure, sure, Ken, and obviously ESG is a topic on a lot of people's minds the last several years. It's something that we're watching closely. Obviously, to the extent it has financial reporting implication, that's something that's within our scope, but we are watching it, it's a developing area, and I am actually looking forward to working with the trustees as we explore what our role is as it relates to ESG and what feedback we get from our stakeholders as part of the strategic plan the trustees are telling.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ken.
No, thank you.
Are there other questions for Rich? If not, thank you very much, Rich. We're going to move on to the Chair of the FASAC, Mike Morrow. Mike?
Thank you, Kathy, and good morning, everyone. My report can be found on Master Page 105 in your materials. The report includes activities through the end of September and highlights some of the recent and upcoming activities of FASAC. Starting with the September FASAC meeting, it included discussions on three topics. First topic was accounting standards and financial statements in the current pandemic environment. During the session, FASAC members discussed various topics important under these circumstances, most notably government assistance, accounting for government assistance, and impairment of non-financial assets. For the preparers, there was strong consensus that the current standards provided a good framework to apply in these unusual circumstances, and users were generally positive about the information they were receiving, but obviously it's still early in the reporting cycle, and that's a topic that we will circle back to in our upcoming December meeting as well, and probably subsequent to that. The second topic we discussed was accounting for research and development. During the session, FASAC members discussed whether improvements to accounting for R&amp;D should be a priority for FASB, and strongly indicated that accounting for R&amp;D is not a significant issue and should not be a high priority for the board, we had strong consensus on that point. Some stated that the current differences in accounting for R&amp;D may be warranted due to the nature of acquired R&amp;D versus internally generated. If the board had a project, some suggested either pursue a broad project on the recognition of all intangible assets, a narrow objective, improved consistency in accounting for purchased R&amp;D, and investors and users consider a project on improving disclosure. But as I said, in general, pretty strong consensus that R&amp;D is not broken at this point in time. The last topic was the implementation of credit losses specifically related to trade receivables. Obviously, financial assets and financial institutions has gained a lot of attention, but we thought it was important to understand how this was impacting non-financial institutions. Generally, the council noted that the standard had an insignificant overall financial impact on the allowance for credit losses related to trade receivables, and users and other investors indicated trade receivables are generally insignificant in their analysis. So in terms of implementation of CECL for non-financial institutions seems to be going well and not a big problem. At our upcoming FASAC meeting on Tuesday, December 15th, we anticipate the topics will be a continued discussion on accounting standards and financial statements in the current environment, and a discussion on complexity and financial reporting, particularly focusing on unnecessary complexity. That discussion will include consideration of what complexity means to investors, as well to preparers and auditors, and use some potential examples as part of our discussion. We've also updated and included our longer-term outlook for potential FASAC topics, although I would note that we're trying to be flexible with our agenda in light of the evolving circumstances. We have put a stake in the ground in terms of some future topics that you can see there. And finally, we have put forth the slate of candidates for the FASAC vacancies for turns beginning January 21, and pending the trustees' approval, expect to announce those members in the coming weeks. I'd be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Mike, thanks so much for your report. Are there any questions on his report? Hearing none, I know you appeared before the Oversight Committee, as we heard earlier from Chuck, so great to hear how things are going. So if there are no questions, then the next report will be from the FASB Chair Joel.
Thanks, Kathy, good to see everybody, great to be here with you for us to discuss what we've been working on at the FASB for the third quarter. After a very busy second quarter where we issued numerous standards and due process documents, the third quarter was a little bit more quiet. We did continue to move our projects forward. Our big three, as we like to call them, the financial reporting model, did have by June 30th an exposure draft approved that was released in July. The revenue and expense recognition, the second of our big three, has a preliminary views document that was issued at the end of June. For both of those, as Eloise mentioned, we are actively working on awareness campaigns to get feedback on those two important projects through the webinars that Eloise talked about in a series of videos, as well as other conferences and speaking engagements that we have. Anytime we can talk about them, we try to drive people to those documents and try to get feedback on them. The webinars, we have had a couple of them, they've been extremely well-attended and very well-received. We are having separate webinars on both projects for user groups designed specifically for them, and then separate webinars for preparers and auditors as well. The final of our big three, the disclosure framework, we had a really great all-virtual public hearing at the end of July, where we had 14 organizations and individuals providing the board with feedback on that project. That combined with the comment letters are being worked on by the board, used by the board in our deliberations that are ongoing, and we're on target to have a final concept statement issued in the spring of '21. All our other practice issue projects and research activities and PIRs all worked forward, moved forward during the third quarter. After some of them might have been paused in the second quarter, you know, out of respect for people dealing with the pandemic, but as everybody's getting more used to the virtual working and remote working, we did start moving all activities forward during the third quarter. From a pandemic COVID-19 response, we do continue to field significant technical inquiries primarily related to the CARES Act, and we continue to spend time on them and trying to help all of our stakeholders with any inquiries they have. Our emergency toolkit on our website, we updated in July, added some new topic areas. I think that's been a good resource for people, for areas, links to GAAP for areas that they may not commonly encounter, but it's a good checklist and resource. Finally, we continue to be actively listening and monitoring and dialoguing with our constituency groups to see how we can help them now and in the future as we continue to deal with the kind of ramifications of working remotely and dealing with the COVID-19. dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic. From an outreach perspective, my transition meetings kind of at the very beginning of the third quarter were ending, the ones that trickled over from the second quarter. And so all of those are completely done primarily in the third quarters. A list of them in my report. A lot of user groups, including legislative organizations, investors, municipal analysts, a lot of those organizations were ones I was meeting with and transitioning from Devout in the third quarter. So those all went really well. A lot of speeches were given. Again, those are detailed in the report. It's a little bit of national conference season early in the third quarter. So organizations like the Association of Government Accountants, the AICPA, and NASACT had national conferences in which we spoke and presented updates on GASB activities at. Couple of other activities, strategic planning, we spent some time on to both give us an internal direction of where we want to go in formulating our goals for 2021 and forward, but also to serve as an input to the FAFSA's overall strategic planning. So we spent some time there. Electronic financial reporting, we as a board acknowledge is an important issue for us to continue to really engage in monitoring activities. We had a couple of educational sessions as a board related to electronic financial reporting, including having some outside speakers come in and talk to us about things that are going on, and technologies that are improving. Finally, a big activity for me has been replacing the legendary David Bean, our longtime Director of Research and Technical Activities, who is retiring at the end of March. So our search for his replacement is actively ongoing. Interviews are actually occurring right now. And that's what we've been working on. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. But like Rich, did want to especially thank the outgoing five trustees for all of your participation in what we do as a GASB, and your support for our organization over your years of service. And thank you. And I look forward to working with the continuing trustees and the new ones. So any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thanks so much, Joel. Chris?
Yes, I'm really impressed, Joel, to hear how you're using technology, and to do more outreach, and to, you know, again, advance the agenda. I was wondering if there are any groups that you're particularly, you know, trying to create new avenues to, or any of the particular challenges with. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. I think that what I've seen is, as I, you know, have doing our dialogue with especially the user organizations, a lot of them are having more virtual conferences that we may not have always attended due to time constraints, et cetera. And so we're able to work with them and use kind of the ease at which you can participate in a national conference to talk to organizations that we maybe didn't present to in the past. And so I've done a few of those, and then there were some that have said, yeah, we'd like to do that, but I'm continuing to pester if they don't, they don't call me back. So a lot of the user organizations, a lot of the preparers and auditors, the ones that we kind of traditionally have had good communication with, that's continued. But I think it's really the user community that we often struggle with, that we're trying to use technology and get in front of them more often.
Mary?
Joel, you mentioned in your report that you're monitoring the activities of the International Public Sector Accounting Standards Board. I'm wondering, what kinds of things are you monitoring? Are you getting any good ideas from them? Or what are you learning from that interaction?
We do actively monitor their meetings. Dave Bean has a really good relationship with Ipsasby, having served over there with them. And so we're transitioning kind of his relationship to me, and we will ultimately to the new director. And so we have ongoing dialogue with them, monitoring of their meetings. We do have coming up in December, a professional development session where we're kind of learning, having a whole internal group update from the current and past Ipsasby Director on things that are ongoing there. So we're kind of constantly monitoring what they're doing and learning what they're doing so that it can inform our projects.
Thank you.
David?
Yes, Joel, I just wanted to ask you, since you've been in your role almost six months now as Chair of the GASB and everything, are there things that you've learned that you might not have appreciated about the GASB before you became Chair?
Sure. I think it's, and it might sound weird, but it's the structure of the process. I mean, you kind of know that there's a due process, that there are ways in which the GASB has an organized way of going about getting feedback and doing the processes and voting, et cetera. But even behind the scenes, there's a very structured regimented process to ensure that every project that's on our agenda continues to move forward. And so it's a pretty elaborate, controlled timeframe to monitor every project and make sure that it's given attention, that it moves forward, that consideration is given from all different avenues, and making sure that all feedback and any feedback is included and provided to the board members for them to consider in their deliberation. So I think it's, I knew there was a process, I knew there was structure, but it's even more elaborate and detailed and comprehensive, I guess, than even I thought coming in. So it's very impressive.
Thank you.
Tony?
Joel, a question, you know, given the economic stress that's rolling through the country right now, which will undoubtedly hit our states and cities, has the GASB seen any increase in the inbound in requests for help, or understanding of particular accounting standards, that type of thing? Or is it maybe a little too early for that?
I think, Tony, that the predominant still, the technical inquiries we're receiving are related to the CARES Act funding, kind of the new and new funding sources, and how that is transitioned maybe from the federal government to the states, to the local governments. We are, you know, getting a lot of inquiries about that, and how, it's almost timing of if they're changing it, what period does it affect, those kind of questions that are complicated, and we're working, you know, to try to help people deal with that. Not so much about kind of financial condition or other outside that new funding source questions. But it is something that we continue to monitor, something I look at routinely to see how governments are dealing with their budget deficits, and are there, you know, new transactions or new, you know, issues that they're dealing with, that I wonder about how our accounting standards would react to that, how it would result in a financial report, and if there are any kind of improvements we need to make. So something we're paying attention to, but I don't think we're getting many questions right now outside of the CARES Act.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you.
So I see no other raised hands. Thank you so much for your report, Joel. The next report is from Robert Scott, the Chair of the GASAC. Robert?
Thank you Cathy. My report starts on Master Page 120 of your materials, and it covers, again, like the other reports, the third quarter of 2020 and into October, in order that we can apprise you of the GASAC's final meeting, which was held on October 19th and 20th. We had nearly all the members of the council participate, and I also thank trustees Lillard and Foster for their participation and observation of our meeting. At the October meeting, we addressed and discussed a number of practice issue and conceptual framework projects and topics, the first being the GASB's project on prior period adjustments, where the council members provided feedback to project staff recommendations that the board will be taking up on a number of issues, including changes in accounting principle, implementation of new pronouncements, changes in measurement methodology, and changes in accounting estimates. We also discussed at length the project on compensated absences, because, and that's the last opportunity for the GASAC to weigh in on that prior to the board, considering issuing an exposure draft early next year. We talked at length about note disclosures for compensated absences, including potential new disclosures related to that topic. The GASAC also discussed the conceptual framework project related to disclosure, and provided feedback to the board on its tentative decisions from their deliberations, including not including concepts related to materiality in that concept statement. Information carrying forward the concept that information excluded in note disclosures needs to explain, describe, or supplement information in the financial statements and is integral to those statements. And carrying forward the concept that information in notes is essential to users in making economic, social, or political decisions and assessing the eligibility. A new project that had been added to the agenda by the board in the summer of 2020 on risk and uncertain use disclosure, provides the opportunity for, at the first time, to provide feedback to the board and staff on that project. We provided feedback on the tentative board decisions to not propose requiring disclosures that address general operations of a government, or the use of estimates as part of those potential disclosures. We also talked about, and provided feedback on disclosure possibilities related to vulnerabilities related to certain concentrations, principal employers, principal resource providers, principal industries, and along the lines of what information should those disclosures be made, what should be included in notes to financial statements. The council also received an update from the staff regarding the post implementation review process, and there are six statements under review, so we were brought up to speed. And the council members were encouraged to reach out to their stakeholder organizations to provide volunteers to assist and participate in the PIR surveys related to those statements. The council had an opportunity, Joel talked about the board and staff discussion, the GASB's specific strategic plan. The council had an opportunity to provide feedback on potential strategic goals as they work towards that and dovetail with the FAFSA's plan. As happens at every council meeting, we provided the opportunity for the GASAC members to apprise the GASB members and staff of emerging issues, and continuing Joel's theme on the CARES Act, that was the primary topic that was brought up with respect to the council members' feedback on emerging issues. Turning to strategic and administrative activities, we did have nine members of the council complete their terms, or are exiting the council at the end of this calendar year, including four members who served a full six-year term. We appreciate their service, and we appreciate the trustees refilling the council with the appointments that I believe you are considering at this meeting. Finally, we finalized and reviewed the calendar for our next meetings for 2021, and the first meeting in 2021 will be April 6th, following your first trustee meeting, which we've decided all, at this point in time, will already be in a virtual format. So as always, we would welcome your participation and observation of meetings. And Cathy, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thanks so much, Robert. Are there any questions for Robert on his report? Seeing none. Thanks again, Robert. Appreciate your hard work and leadership. And our next report is from the FAFSA Executive Director, John Auchincloss. John?
Thanks Cathy. As is perhaps evident from the nature of this meeting, during this ongoing pandemic, we're continuing to operate principally in a remote environment. But I'm happy to report that our productivity, I believe, has remained high. We did recently reopen our offices in Narwhal on a very limited and strictly voluntary basis, but our daily headcount there has been fairly low, around about 10% of our total workforce. And we've seen very good compliance with our safety protocols. We do not yet have a definitive timeframe for when our offices will be open again for visitors, or when we will be resuming business travel. I've previously reported on our content vision and enablement, or CVE project, through which we are bringing our publication systems and processes into a modern and robust platform. This project, which is going to continue into 2022, is currently in the second of three phases. We did have a pause earlier this year due to some adjustments we needed to make, and in part, in response to the difficulties that have arisen during the pandemic. But the project is now back in full swing, and the team has been able to make good progress in a number of key areas. We're working with our vendors right now to support all the foundational work needed to begin the third and final phase, in which we're going to implement the new system early next year. As I've noted, we expect the project will not be fully complete until 2022. You heard earlier that we'll be welcoming five new trustees to the board in 2021, and I do want to point out that next year, we're also going to be starting to plan the search for the three trustees who will replace Sue Carter, Tony Dowd, and Eloise Foster, whose terms will end in December of next year. The official kickoff of those searches will be early next year. In addition, as you heard from Joel Black, we'll be, we are searching for someone to succeed, the GASB Technical Director, Dave Bean, who will be retiring at the end of March. Earlier this morning, our Board of Trustees approved the FAFSA's budget for 2021. A couple of highlights. Our budget expenses of $68.1 million represent a 3% increase from the 2020 budget. Primary drivers include an annual salary increase for staff. But I'd like to point out that in recognition of the environment in which we find ourselves, our senior leadership team will not be receiving any salary increases in 2021. We also have built into our 2021 budget, reduction in meeting and travel costs due to the COVID pandemic. I'm glad to report that our 2021 budget will result in a 0% increase in accounting support fees for the FASB, and there will be a slight increase of 7% in the accounting support fees for the GASB, which reflect additional staffing relative to the transition of the Technical Director position. I'd like to point out that our stakeholders do not pay 100% of our recoverable expenses. Each year, the FAF voluntarily contributes an amount from its reserve funds, which fluctuates based on a number of factors. This year, we're budgeting for, I'm sorry, for 2021, we're budgeting a contribution, a voluntary contribution of $12.0 million, which is slightly higher than the contribution we made in 2020. There's an explanation on our website depicting the factors that affect our reserve funds. The next step in our budget is that we will submit it to the SEC for its review of the FASB accounting support fee, to ensure it's consistent with Section 109 of the Sarbanes-Oxley Act. Last item I'd like to mention is our strategic planning effort, which is currently underway. We recently completed stakeholder outreach that included a survey, which was taken by over 700 stakeholders, as well as 50 interviews with FASB, GASB, and FAFSA stakeholders. Later today, the consultants who conducted the outreach will be providing our Board of Trustees an overview of the survey results, and highlight what they heard in the interviews. We plan to use what we learn through this outreach to develop our strategic priorities and objectives, and will seek additional input as needed. We're planning to issue a draft of our plan for public comment in the first half of next year. And with that, Madam Chair, concludes my report, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
John, thanks so much. And I just want to commend you and the staff for all of their excellent work and leadership through what has been a challenging environment. Obviously, still have a lot going on, but you're doing it commendably. So thank you. Are there any questions or comments for John? If not, thanks again, John. Our final report is from our Treasurer, Chris Cumming, on our financials. Chris?
Yes, thank you Cathy. The net assets of the Financial Accounting Foundation were $16.5 million at the end of the 9/30/2020. That is 4.5 million above the budgeted increase that we expected. It is also a reflection, the 16.5, that we include all of the accounting fees for the year they're booked in January. So of that 4.5 difference between budget and the increase in net assets, 4 million of that represents savings on expenses, largely for factors that John actually has just mentioned. One factor is the, some change in timing, a delayed timing of expenses associated with the onboarding of our two new chairs, as well as other staff positions, reduced travel reduced travel and meeting expenses. And a third factor is a lower professional fees. The remaining chunk of large expense reduction is associated with the CVE project, where through 9/30, we expected this year to spend about a million in expenses and we are 550,000 below that because of the timing changes that John described. Similar non, non-income aspect is the capital expenditure, which is similarly just a fraction of what we had planned to spend this year, but will be spending in '21 and '22. The last bit of the 4.5 million to the good of our overall net assets is, reflects the investment results in the third quarter, you know, as markets recovered, of course. We are very close, about three under our headcount at 9/30. And so that is really, we're still in very good shape. And again, some of these changes, particularly the lower travel and meeting expense, as John has mentioned, will be continued into 2021. Thank you. That is all I have for my report and happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much, Chris. So seeing no questions, um, thank you again. Before we conclude today, I would like to take a few minutes to recognize our trustees who are retiring from their service to the FAF board. All were appointed in January 2016 and their terms will conclude effective December 31, 2020. So if we were gathered in person today, I would have had the pleasure of inviting them up individually to the front of our room to present them with a framed picture, acknowledging their, their years of service. We have already shipped those pictures to our retiring trustees and I know that everyone at the FAF and the FASB and the Gatsby wishes they could express their appreciation of their service in person. So as today is our last meeting for this year, it is today that we say goodbye. We say goodbye to Charles Allen, Chuck, who has been co-chair of the Oversight Committee for the past two years and served on the Appointments Committee for his full, for his full term. Christine Cumming, Chris, has been the FAF Secretary and Treasurer since 2018 and has served on both the Appointments and Audit and Finance Committees for the past five years. Eugene Flood, Gene, who served on both the Oversight and Compensation Committees during his five-year term. Kenneth Robinson, Ken, who has chaired the Audit and Finance Committee for the past four years and served on the Audit, served on the Appointments Committee for his full term. And finally, Diane Rubin, who has served as FAF Vice Chair from 2019. And again, Diane, it's been a pleasure to serve with you. Thank you so much for your leadership as Vice Chair and has been a member of the Appointments and Oversight Committees and also filled the role of PCC Liaison for the past five years, which is again, a really important role. So each of you, through your leadership, have made a significant contribution to our work and advancing our important mission. And you will be sorely missed. So on behalf of all of us here today, I simply say thank you. This is the end of the public session of today's FAF Board of Trustees meeting. I want to thank you again for all of you who tuned in to the webcast for our virtual meeting. And I would like to remind everyone that the next Board of Trustees meeting will be held on Tuesday, February the 23rd, 2021. So to everyone, thank you and have a great day.